It is now seven thirty, Mrs. Lee.
No, they won't do anything outside of state limits.
It's Monday, March sixth, at seven thirty, I bid.
Mr. Connie, please call the roll.
Stangline?
Here.
Johnson?
President.
Chesok?
Here.
O'Day?
Here.
Stunick?
Here.
Terry?
Here.
Bevins?
Here.
Bado?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance for all.
Item four is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Stangline, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stunick, any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Approval of the agenda?
I would mean the approval of the agenda, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, no. All in favor say aye. Sorry. Sorry about that. Good call.
She's the administrator.
Opposed? Yeah, right. The agenda's been approved. Item five is a consent calendar. All matters listed are considered routine by the council will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time. The council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Is there a move to adopt the consent calendar?
Move to approve Chesnick?
Chesnick?
Second.
Chesnick? Called me at the last meeting.
Stangline, any discussion? Hearing none, let's call the roll on this one.
Stangline? Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesok?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunick?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes. The consent calendar has been adopted. Item number six is the council committee report, six A, Safety and Public Works Committee Chairman Mike O'Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had six items tonight on safety and public works, first of which was a Event Street closer application for CLC 5K. A motion coming out of committee was to approve the attached application under conditions as described in the event application, and I so moved.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesnick. Any discussion? Mr. Chair.
This is on Saturday, May sixth, from nine AM to ten thirty AM. This is just a 5K run by CLC for mental health awareness. I suggest we all run it in it. That's all.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Second item was Minnesota DNR Outdoor Recreation Grant Application. This was the grant application that was on last meeting's agenda, and we had a discussion with the park board clarifying some of the stuff that's on this grant application. And the motion coming out of committee was to approve the authorization for the, to apply for the Minnesota DNR Outdoor Recreation Grant for the Lum Park Beach and Campground Expansion Project to allow for demolition of the existing building and construction of a new pavilion facility, and I so moved.
Second.
Motion by O'Day, second by Stangline, any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next item was the approval of a resolution dedicating parklands. We had a bit of a discussion on this one. This got brought up because of the dedication of our new park, Lyman P. White Park, and the expansion of that park upon its dedication, basically dedicating that park all the way up to the College Drive Bridge as one park. Staff couldn't find any history of us actually, or any council, actually dedicating parklands anywhere in our records. So as a part of this resolution, the rest of our parks were added to a list of dedication lands for our parks. When we discussed this, there was a few parks that came up that we decided to leave off as being dedicated at this time, one being Trailside Park, another being Buffalo Hills Lions Park, and the other being Gustafson Park, all for various reasons. Buffalo Hills Park doesn't use all of its land. There's possible development that could happen there. I'm not saying that it's going to. The same thing with Trailside Park. We have 120 acres of land there, and in our discussions with the park board last week, we were all in agreement that we have an abundance of facilities and park space right now. So the expansion of that park, or the development of that park, is far beyond the horizon. And then Gustafson Park is just, is a park that we don't use for any programming. We do mow it, and the discussion would be regarding whether we want to continue to mow that forever. Are we going to use it for any programming or anything else? Or do we put it up for some type of sale? So not knowing what we're going to do with those three parks, we motion forward to move forward with this resolution minus those three parks, and I so move.
We have a motion by O'Day, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stangline, any discussion? Mr. Chairman Johnson.
Mr. President, I just have one question. I don't disagree with not designating those three parks because of the reasons O'Day mentioned, but my one question is, is the Parks Department still going to maintain those even if we don't by proper resolution designate them over? Because we still do need to mow what is currently Gustafson Park, and will they be doing that?
That's a good question. My answer to that was, would be that they have done that for 151 years. So any parkland that we have?
Odds are good.
Odds are pretty good.
We get a lot of complaint about mowing of city property.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Acting Administrator Connie, please call the roll.
Stangline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesok?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunick?
Yep.
Terry?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes. That resolution is adopted. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our fourth item was a resolution removing on-street parking from Lum Park Road. This is an old grant that we did receive to rebuild the road from Highway 210 into our boat launch in Lum Park. Our city engineer has come up with the design, and he has informed us that the removal of on-street parking during part of, on part of that road is necessary to allow for trail space to coincide across, if you could point to where the box culvert is, where the trail runs across the creek there, and that is the main reason for it, as far as I can understand. So motion coming out of committee was to adopt the resolution changing the parking zone on Lum Park Road between trunk highway 210 and the boat launch access road, and I so move.
We have a motion by O'Day, is there a second? Second by Chesok, is there any discussion? Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, Mr. President, I do have one question. Sometimes there are events in Lum Park, like one that comes to mind is the ski loons, and it's a, it's a parking nightmare, which is a good thing because there's a lot of people in the parks. But if we're taking away all of that parking for ski loons, we're going to be pushing people all the way up onto probably 13th Avenue, 12th Avenue Northeast to get a parking spot. So I don't know if that's that good of an idea, but I'll support the motion, just stating my concern.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Mayor Bado?
So I am going to speak against this because during the process for this, this is a grant that was initially brought through the Parks Department. This is the first I've been hearing of removal of on-street parking. The, one of the key philosophies that we as a city continue to say that we have is that we want to push cars onto the street for on-street parking. Yet in the last month, we continue to have items come up that are asking us to remove on-street parking specifically on this item here. My concern is, as a parks, as a park board, they are currently looking to remove parking from the beach area, make that just a handicap area for parking, and the thought process was to move the parking onto the street. Well, now we're talking about taking a gigantic chunk away, and as you said, Gabe, for the ski loons, we already have cars lined up all down 14th Avenue. You know, we're now going to be encroaching on J Street, which has a gigantic hill. You're going to have people parking on 13th Street, which is not a safe street for people to be traversing trying to get to a park. You know, if we continue to say that our philosophy is that we want to remove our parking lots specifically in the parks, this to me seems like a really weird time, and at the end of a process to now come forward and say we're going to remove the on-street parking. At no point during our conversation on this, when asking the park board if we wanted to apply for the grant and asking the council to apply for the grant, was there a conversation about removing on-street parking. And I just think that if we're going to say that's our philosophy, then when these things come up, we have to stand by our philosophy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Stunick?
Could we tweak the ordinance to be event-specific, like ski loons? Okay, we can park there. Normal business hours during the week or whatever, and there's no events, no parking. Would that be too difficult? That would kind of solve both problems.
I think that'd be a staff question.
Yeah.
Any idea if you could answer that, Jesse?
We would not be able to. So the narrowing is specifically limited to the box culvert area. That narrowing would not allow for two-way traffic if there was on-street parking. The reason why we brought this up was, in effect, because of the lane configuration at the intersection at 210 and a couple hundred feet to the north, there isn't enough space to currently allow parking because of the three lanes. And then there's also no parking adjacent to the boat trailer parking area, as well as the two access to the maintenance facility there. So there's a lot of that stretch that is already not allowing parking. So because of this narrowing, we're kind of taking away the parking from the middle of that. So I want to say cleaning it up, but everything from 210 to the boat launch road would be restricted. The other part to notice, or note, is that with the Parks Maintenance Facility moving from this location, their maintenance facility would have a lot of off-street parking available currently as part of this project.
Mr. President?
Mr. Chesick?
May I ask a question of Mr. Dean?
Yes, absolutely.
Engineer Dean, if we don't approve this, can you move forward with your project?
We would have to increase the cost of the project to expand that box culvert a little bit further.
Any idea of the additional cost, off the top of your head perhaps?
I'd be throwing a number, but it would be at least $50,000 on a project that is a little over the original budget that we had at first.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
So, well, to answer if this went to park board too, as part of your comment? Myself, I have not, I have not heard this conversation go to the park board.
Thank you.
My, my comment on that is twofold. First, on the, we're removing buildings, so we'll just park there. The whole point is to not have surface parking lots. We're talking at Bain about tearing up our surface parking lot because we don't want surface parking lots in our parks. I, so I, it just irritates me to continually have these conversations because we're trying to get away from that philosophy because it's expensive. $50,000 is expensive. I guess, am I misunderstanding that it's just that small area, or are we talking about this entire thing? Because I'm kind of hearing two things. It's at that area, there'll be restriction, but then I'm hearing that it's from the 210 access to, to the boat launch, which is, I mean, we're talking about a significant amount of parking, significant amount of parking.
You're the park guy. Mr. Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President, for letting me speak again. I no longer support the emotion, the motion. I think we should at least send it to the park board and get their thoughts and their opinions, and see if it fits their plan for what they want to see in Lum Park for the next generation. So I'm going to vote no.
I agree with that. Any other comments? Round three, Mr. Mayor. You're the park liaison.
I just want to say one last thing. It is a road, it is a road, so it is your, it is under your jurisdiction, and I tried to make sure that we are clear about that, that the park board is not in charge of roads. But I do think that, you know, even when we were having the conversations about the children's museum, we were continually talking about how we were going to build something that would have on-street parking, and this just seems way out of balance from every conversation we've had.
All right, Mr. O'Day.
One quick question that we didn't bring up. If you look at the southwest bend towards that pump station, is there any way to expand that, much like we're doing at Bain, into some type of diagonal parking, or at least, at least widen the road so that there's parking all the way up to that intersection before the box culvert? Would that be a cheaper route? And then at least we would still maintain parking from 210 to the culvert?
That was not originally part of the scope of the project. It is something that we can explore. I don't foresee that there's a lot of space for stalls there, and I don't know if there's any utility issues there, so I can't say if that's feasible or not.
Even if it were just regular on-street parking like it is today?
To widen it to accommodate on-street, like, parallel, is it?
Correct, yeah.
Potentially. I'd have to relook at it.
We're getting into the what-ifs, and the what-others, and the what-else. And the motion is this. What's before us, it's been seconded. You know, if you, if you want to talk about all the other possibilities, I'm understanding that, let's defeat this one first. If you like this one, then let's affirm this one first. But let's not, we don't want to get into the, all the other possibilities. This is our motion by O'Day, second by Chesick. The motion is to adopt the resolution as presented. Okay? Administrator Hillman, please call the roll. Acting Administrator Hillman.
Stangline?
No.
Johnson?
Nope.
Chesok?
No.
O'Day?
No.
Stunick?
No.
Terry?
Bevins?
No. That resolution, that resolution has been defeated. Mr. O'Day, you seem to be having some, some ideas. Would you like to try another motion, like maybe to refer to the park board?
Do you want to motion for me, for me to refer a question to the park board?
The question.
I would like, I would like, I would like to motion, we ask the park board to take a look at this design and see if it, it works for their parking plans moving into the master plan of Lum Park, whereas?
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Excellent job, Mr. O'Day.
Hey, thanks.
Let's move on.
All right, number five. Another fun one. We, we went back and we heard from a couple other proposals for this engineering services for Buffalo Hills Gully Remediation Project. Coming into our, our meeting in our packet, we had one other proposal. The original from Bolton &amp; Mink was about 76,000. We had another one come in from WSB at about 72,000, and then upon arriving for the meeting, we got another late proposal from SEH for 64,000 in some odd sense. After we discussed how we kind of wish we could maybe avoid this situation where we go back and ask for more proposals after we've only had one, out of fairness, we don't want to continue to do that, but saving $12,000 is saving $12,000, and the motion coming out of committee was to go with SEH for their proposal for engineering services.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stangline? All right. Mr. O'Day?
Yeah, I just explained it all.
I know you did. I was trying to get the motion seconded. All right. You heard a motion, a second, and a lot of discussion. Mr. Johnson?
I have one question. Did SEH see Bolton &amp; Mink's proposal before they submitted theirs? I can't support this motion.
President Bevins?
Mr. Chesick?
I was very hesitant at our last meeting to ask staff, even though I, I supported it coming out of committee, to look for other, and I mentioned the same issue that Mr. Johnson brought up. It, I, we, I, I already discussed this with the city attorney. He did say that there is nothing illegal about going out for professional services bids. However, it doesn't smell right to me once we've had a published amount from Bolton &amp; Mink, and then we go back and see if there's any other engineering firms that want to focus on the same scope and everything, and follow the same items, and come back with a lower price. I love saving money. However, are there any other engineering firms we could go ask now? Now that we know the lowest one is 64,000. So I'm in agreement with Mr. Johnson that I can't support this, and I vote it no on it in committee. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chesick. Any further discussion? I have one thought, and I, and this is what I was referring to, was you've brought up many times, is this even our responsibility? And I, I have yet to hear a legal opinion as to whether it is. So I'm going to vote against this from the perspective of, I'm not 100% sure I want to put a dime into this, regardless of who the low bid is, if it's not our responsibility to fill the gully. I have a little bit of a, of a, of a thought that this is like complaining when you buy a house next to the airport, or next to the railroad tracks, or next to BIR, and then complain about the noise. Well, you built a house on a water sluice way, you know, it's practically on a river a couple times a year, and then you complain that you have extra, and you get all the benefits of having that year-round, but, but as, as there's maintenance involved, you don't, I don't know that I've had it, I believe I've seen one written complaint on this from one property on our, but I don't know. Anyway, yes, to say, I think there's another issue here that we should first find out if we're responsible to do this. So, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, before this SEH thing, and it was a curveball for me, I was going to vote against the motion because of the funding mechanism proposed by staff, which is to take it out of the stormwater fund. I would support the project if we assess the benefiting properties like we do in other public works projects in this city. But taxing all of the taxpayers to benefit a dozen houses doesn't seem right. So that's another reason, in addition to this SEH.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
I will speak against this project again for the same reasons that you did. I went back. I actually went back and found photographs, like I said, 1939, I believe they are, before any of the development is done there, before any of the roads are there, and the gully exists. We're talking about probably potentially a 100,000-year-old depression, and taking responsibility for that just seems really inappropriate considering all the other waterways and depressions that we have in the city. Are we then going to start looking at all those projects? I think it's just a really slippery slope to get involved in.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. We have a motion. We have a second to accept a proposal from SEH. Is this a resolution, or, nope, this is just a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye. We're asked for a roll call, please.
Stangline?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Chesok?
No.
O'Day?
Aye.
Stunick?
No.
Terry?
No.
Bevins?
No. That motion is defeated. Is there anybody else who wants to take a stab at I would, I would look for a motion to refer this to legal as to what our responsibilities are.
I'd make that motion.
Okay, so there's a motion to refer this to legal, second by Chesick. My, my, thank you very much, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Chesick. I really think that's the question to start with. So, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Mr. O'Day, thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number six was the approval of our street lighting policy. We've probably talked about this street lighting policy more than any other policy that we've had in the time I've been here. So, but it's all, as Jesse put it, in a pretty package for anybody that's going to come in and do any developing, they can look through this packet and see exactly what our standards are, which we've all decided on a couple different times now. So a motion coming out of committee was to approve the street lighting policy as is, and I so move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesick. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Chesick?
This policy's been reviewed more times than I've, than, since I've been on here than I care to go over to, so.
Thank you.
We can do it again.
You know, I certainly support the motion, Mr. Chesick, and agree it's been there a lot. I suspect somewhere down the line, we may regret no banners on Washington Street. But with the extreme expense of having to do that, I certainly support the motion the way it is. I think it's sort of sad. I like the banners on College Drive. I think they look nice, and I think they would look nice on Washington Street, but I, if I, I'm a taxpayer, so I don't want to pay for them. Any further discussion? Not at the, I'm sorry, not at the, the additional expense. Any, any further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, where are we here? Voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Mr. O'Day?
And report?
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman Johnson, personal and finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have eight quick items on the agenda tonight, the first of which is to ratify the hiring of Mr. Nathan, Nathaniel Peters effective March 13th, 2023 on step four of the police officer wage grid, and I so move.
Second. We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunick. Chairman Johnson?
Put us at 26 sworn officers.
That's, that's pretty good. All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Mr. President, next up is an update regarding the police chief hiring process. The motion is to approve the formation of a work group comprised of one or two city council members with volunteers selected by the council president, city administrator Bergman, and HR Director Schubert to oversee the interview and promotion recommendation process, and I so move.
We have a motion by Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Terry. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson?
So we posted internally, we received two internal applications. So right now, we're going to put together an interview committee, and they're going to go forward with the interviews and bring back a recommendation to the council.
Any further discussion on the process? Any further discussion on the process? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Let's look for volunteers right now. We're looking for two. Chairman Johnson and Commissioner Terry. My only concern is you are both on the same committee. I actually see no problem with that, as long as you both understand there's no discussing anything else other than the hiring of the police chief. Okay? Okay. All right. We're looking for a motion. Those are my nominees. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Motion by Stangline, second by Stunick. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, too, for volunteering.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is authorize submission of request for pay equity reconsideration, and the motion is to authorize city and Flaherty &amp; Hood staff to officially request a reconsideration and an extension of time from the Minnesota Management and Budget Department for the city of Brainerd to achieve compliance and ultimately a more equitable pay system under the law regarding the city's pay equity report that was due January 31st, 2023 for wages as of December 31st, 2022, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunick. Chairman Johnson?
So we knew, we expected we were going to fail pay equity. We submitted the reports. The state confirmed we have indeed failed pay equity. This is the next step of getting an extension to get our pay system right, hopefully by the end of the year, but it'll be up to the state how long we get. But this request for a reconsideration of everything we all agree about is just the next step, so we're going to, we're going to support it.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the pay equity motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you. Please proceed.
All right. Then the next one is an update regarding the classification and compensation study. There's some good memo in the packet that y'all read and enjoyed. We did have a, this was information, but we made a motion out of committee to approve the market survey sources as presented, but remove Sartell and Sock Rapids and potentially add Little Falls, and I so move.
We have a motion by Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Terry. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson?
Now, we had some discussion on Sartell and Sock Rapids and how comparable they were to the city of Brainerd, and it didn't seem like they were all that comparable, but maybe Little Falls is. So we'll see if we can't get those added and removed for our pay equity study, or pay.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I just wanted to say, I certainly relish these remaining memos of Chris, HR Director.
Not many left.
She thinks she's leaving, but we haven't approved that one yet. Any further discussion? Thank you. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, this is about a request for a council member representative on a work group to discuss the top positions in the BPU department, and the motion is to appoint an individual to be determined as city council's representative to serve on a work group to begin preparations for BPU Finance Director's upcoming retirement, and I so move.
We have a motion by Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stunick. Chairman Johnson?
So with the retire, the impending retirement of Finance Director Wickland, the BPU Commission asked Flaherty &amp; Hood to kind of look at their organizational structure and give a recommendation. BPU Commission has requested the city council appoint a member to join their personnel committee members, as well as city administrator Bergman and HR Director Schubert, to review and oversee the potential restructuring. and oversee the potential restructuring or what the BPU organization looks like going forward, and we did have, Kara Terry did volunteer to serve. So if you want to point her after this motion, that'd be great.
We'll start with the procedural motion. Any more discussion on the process? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Now on the representative, we've got Kara Terry, anybody else interested? Hearing none, I would like to look to hear a motion approving Kara Terry as that representative.
So moved.
Motion by Stangline, second by Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Thank you, Kara. Gabe, you going to apply for Todd's spot?
I've already had it, I've already applied. It's not even open yet, and I've applied.
Please proceed.
Next item is authorize the donation of Crow Wing County Historical Society donation request, and the motion is to authorize a five hundred dollar donation to the Crow Wing County Historical Society to be paid out of the special projects budgeted line item, and I so move.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Terry. Chairman Johnson?
As we talk about most every year, that this is a legal donation, usually cities cannot donate to charities, but a historical society is an allowable donation, and you see in the past, past few years, it's been five hundred dollars a year, so we decided to recommend that again.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Please proceed.
All right, the next motion is to authorize appropriate signatures and the purchase of the Civic Clerk software to be paid out of the twenty twenty-three special projects budgeted line item, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson?
So this Civic Clerk software is an upgrade over the current software we're using to create our agendas in, in the city. This software, while, while it costs ten thousand dollars to implement, will save a lot of staff time of going back to fix mistakes, and, and then another added convenience of it is it can convert the packets into HTML language, which makes it much easier, much more accessible to all the members of the community who want that or need that. So it, it improves staff efficiency and citizen engagement.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion?
President Bevins?
Mr. Chesick?
Yes, I wanted to ask if the additional items for an additional cost were ever discussed by staff or perhaps in the committee. There was no prices indicated what those additional services would be, and if the city staff thinks that we may be implementing those, if they have a cost.
Chairman Johnson?
The committee did not hear anything about options or anything like that.
Okay.
It's, excuse me, Jeff, are you thinking of the minute function?
Well, there was three or four items, I couldn't recite them for you right now, but there was three or four items that it said additional, there was additional costs apply to these, like add-ons perhaps, and, and it was very clear in there what they were, and I just know if that's something the city plans on implementing or purchasing.
Jeff, can we bring this back at the next meeting?
It's on the statement of work, too.
I, I don't know if we have a deadline here, I think, for the timing of this, don't we? By the end of, I think it's the end of March that the prices get through.
I meant on the additional options.
Well, yeah.
They're not part of this, in other words, they're not part of this motion.
So we have this here, list everything that's included.
Okay, I, I'm good with that. That's fair.
Mr. Johnson, there is a yearly fee as well?
Yeah, it looks like it's five thousand dollars a year. I think we'll have to find a way to put it in the budget that's not in the, in the, in the special projects fund, but get it into the administrative budget in the future.
And I do believe that staff is going to try to negotiate year two as well, just to see if we can get it down below, and also if the other agencies such as BPU, HRA, going on in the airport, that would also help lower the cost as well.
Thank you.
President Bevins?
Chair, yes, Mr. Chesick?
Did I not see a five percent annual increase? Somebody said five thousand, I thought it was five percent annual increase.
Year two is five thousand dollars, and then they made it sound like they're open for negotiations on years three, four, five, however long.
Okay, I've misread it. It says.
Any further discussion? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. The final item is informational, and if you like HR director Schubert's memos, you should check out this memo by Finance Director Connie Hillman outlining the twenty twenty-four fire assessment calculation. It is a riveting one, two, three, four pages long, great information, the high level stuff. The fire budget is going up eleven thousand four hundred forty-eight dollars next year. Of that, Brainerd's share is going up four thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars.
Thank you. Please proceed.
End of report.
Thank you. We will move on to unfinished business, item seven. Item seven A is the final reading and public hearing of proposed ordinance fifteen forty-seven, amending section three two zero of the city code regarding administrative citations. Mr. Kramvik, anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So this proposed ordinance expedites the process for lawn grass, sidewalks, no removal, garbage, animal feces by no longer requiring city council approval for abatement. Repeat offenders for these four nuisances will now receive one citation and administrative abatement, and this is really repeat offenders if they had been abated within the last twelve months. So with this, while some of the aspects of the new citation process were successful this last summer, I'd say the primary concerns that we heard from residents when they'd call with the department is that, that these, specifically these four items were not being dealt with fast enough. So this is a recommendation from staff to, a motion to conduct the final reading of proposed ordinance fifteen forty-seven and dispense with the actual reading, hold a public hearing, and a motion to adopt proposed ordinance fifteen forty-seven, an ordinance amending section three twenty of the city code.
Thank you, Mr. Kramvik. Is there any questions of staff? Any questions of staff? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion to conduct the final reading of proposed ordinance one five four seven and dispense with the actual reading.
So move.
Motion by Stunek, is there a second? Second by Stangline, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. It's eight oh seven, and I will open the public hearing on proposed ordinance one five four seven on code enforcement. Brent, do we have anybody online? Okay, thank you. So we don't have anybody online. Anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on proposed ordinance one five four seven? Now's your chance. Anybody at all? And for a final time, anybody wishing to speak on one five four seven? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and look for a motion to adopt proposed ordinance one five four seven, an ordinance amending section three two zero of the city code pertaining to administrative citations. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Motion by Stangline, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Terry, any discussion? Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I won't belabor the point, but I will be voting no because there is no administrative citation dollar amount cap, and I do think that is necessary to protect the citizens from unreasonable fines.
Thank you for your consistency, Chairman Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, acting administrator Hillman, please call the roll.
Stangline?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Chesak?
Yes.
Oday?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that motion is adopted. Next up is item seven B, the final reading of proposed ordinance one five four eight, rezoning parcel number four one one, six zero five, zero four, to RL one. One thing to note is in the packet, uh, somewhere it says there's going to be a public hearing, but that public hearing was held at planning and zoning, so there'll be no public hearing tonight on this, and we're, uh, looking for, Mr. Kramvik, anything you wish to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So the purpose of this rezoning is to prepare tract B of the survey that was provided lying west of Jordan Road for the consolidation of the contiguous parcel next to it, which is also zoned rural living one zoning district. The applicant has already applied for the consolidation and approval or denials based on this rezoning request, and as President Bevins had mentioned, since this was a rezoning planning commission did conduct the public hearing, planning commission considered this request at their last meeting and voted four to one in favor of recommending approval of this rezoning request, so staff recommends a motion to conduct the final reading of proposed ordinance fifteen forty-eight and dispense with the actual reading, and a motion to adopt proposed ordinance fifteen forty-eight, an ordinance amending the city of Brainerd zoning map.
Any questions of staff? Thank you, Mr. Kramvik. We are now looking for a motion to conduct the final reading of proposed ordinance one five four eight and dispense with the actual reading.
So moved.
Motion by Stangline, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Terry, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously, unanimously. Next up, we're looking for a motion to adopt proposed ordinance one five four eight, an ordinance amending the city of Brainerd zoning map.
So move, Johnson.
Johnson, second. Stunek, any discussion? Acting administrator Hillman, please call the roll.
Stangline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Oday?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes. That resolution is, that ordinance is adopted. Next up is item seven C, a call for applicants. Mayor Bedeau?
Thank you, council president. The following applications are available at our website, www.c i dot brainerd dot m n dot u s slash boards. The following terms expire twelve thirty-one of said year. Charter commission, two terms expiring twenty twenty-six, two terms expiring twenty twenty-five. Rental dwelling license board of appeals, five terms expiring twenty twenty-four. TAC, one term expiring twenty twenty-three. We also have two terms on the economic development authority, those terms expire on nine seven of said year. Economic development authority, one term expiring twenty twenty-eight, and one term expiring twenty twenty-six.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up is my committee recommendations. I have a opening on the parking commission, one term to expire twenty twenty-six, and the planning commission, one term to expire twenty twenty-five. Next up is the public forum. I will open it at eight twelve. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. We'd like to have you keep it to about three minutes if you can. And we are open, and I see no one online, no citizens online, and I will ask a second time if there's anybody in the audience who wishes to address the council on matters not on the agenda. And a final call, and we will close the public forum. We'll move on to staff reports. We'll start on my left, HR director Schubert. Fire chief Holmes?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Attorney Engel?
Nothing, thank you.
Community development director Kramvik?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So just wanted to inform council of the next planning commission meeting. There is one CUP application for a five unit apartment complex on Crestview Lane. A couple of the other discussion items will be a discussion on the proposed lighting ordinance. This is specifically regarding lighting on structures, landscape lighting, as well as architectural lighting. The commission will also discuss high level goals of the parking ordinance in the zoning code specifically for multifamily housing, commercial properties, as well as industrial properties.
Thank you. Jesse Dean, city engineer, public works director?
Nothing yet, Mr. President.
Thank you. Well, Hopright, you ought to be quiet. What's that?
I have nothing to add.
From either one?
No.
No?
I'll let Jennifer make the notes, but when she's back.
Okay, all right. Deputy chief Davis, nothing to add? Okay. Online, we've got Sean Strong, our IT director. Anything, Sean?
Sean's actually not here, it's just logged in as Sean.
Got it. How about Eric Sharfenteer from the HRA?
Nothing this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. We will close the staff reports and turn it over to the honorable Mayor Bedeau.
Oh, no. That's right, honorable. If you send me emails, make sure you start it off with honorable mayor. Uh, I just have one item. This weekend, Saturday, is the downtown Brainerd Saint Patrick's Day celebration. It is a good time.
Want to borrow the tie?
I do want to borrow the tie, may I? Okay, well, we'll do that later. You can wash it off first, I don't need any of your neck sweat.